I was still. I dreamt we'd be thinking things in terms of states and places. It's very subtle like that. You're at the pool table.
That's right.
Andrew, Andrew. The cool industry.
Alright.
Uh, so you all know that is valid. So don't get your thoughts on it.
Just can say a little.
Again, yeah.
Too good to be right over there.
Sure. Not too bad. Basically, so I didn't go to. My sister is a paper. So they've been like even in. And so she twisted my arm. So the guards. I'll give this to you. It's not what I said. Soon if I told them I was hiding. So how long does it take to stay in traffic? Right, yeah. Uh, no, so we have to save right back. So we got. Yeah, well, that's something is that. So the first good day we have in the spring.
One second.
Yeah.
There we go. Uh, we're gonna let. Late night riots get settled before we really start out. Give a few more minutes to chat.
There used to be racks of chairs. I don't want to get in here. I have no idea. Anywhere is over there, thanks.
If anybody's feeling live, I am Sprite baby. Use a four chair. Alright, there's some miscellaneous business we can do before everybody gets here. Uh, welcome. This is a pretty good turnout. Glad to see you all here at nine. First off, we should thank everybody that set this up. The boards and the committees just put all this together. The town staff would do all the work that let us look like we did something. So if you get above the mall, it would be helpful. And, um, we can jump right in without getting into the, um. Results. Uh, for select. Martha Dedman received one hundred forty-three votes and was elected. Uh, Tonya Schmidt received eighty-seven votes. There were four blanks. For the school board, uh, Catherine Emery received one hundred fifty-eight votes and was elected. Brian Hinkle received one hundred seventy-three votes and elected. And there were thirty-seven blanks. Uh, the square district trustee Julie Reddish Bennett received two hundred and eleven votes was elected with two blanks. And then it feels stalling. The first order of business really is, well, there's two first. There's a first and a second. Uh, they were handing out as you came in a seat that sort of explains the process. Is there one? When you're talking on the floor of a town meeting, it's pretty basic. Talk to the mic, to me, not to each other. And if you come down and make and speak when you can. Um, the truth is, is we all doubt some of the standards here as well or view still. And what? See? So despite the fact that you think you can be heard from the stands, it's not always true. So if you come down here to speak, it would be appreciated. Uh, be civil. Then state your case. The other thing that I can do that will save us some time is that I can ask you, um. Unanimous consent to not have to read all the complete articles. I can redo the beginning section, but I want it to go page after page after page. So if that's as real as anything or. I'd like to hear. Is there, is there anybody that really wants to listen to me read all those? Alright. Yeah. They, they are. Is everybody in? Alright. The first, uh. The first article is, we did article two yesterday to vote, and we've announced that article three. To see if non-owners will be allowed unrecognized to speak during the annual town meeting. Yep. We have to swear their name first, excuse me. So whoever. Left didn't would like to be sworn in. Come on. I meant to mention that I am not built for her. So you'll have to bury her.
I just wanna take a moment to thank everyone who was a candidate that ran for some of the offices we have available and for their time and commitment to the community. And also wanna thank the voters that came out yesterday and voted. And it was a very successful election, so thank you for your participation. Martha, I will give you your oath if you would raise your right hand and read your oath.
I, Martha Dedman, do swear I will support the Constitution of the United States and this state so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof. I, Martha Dedman, do swear that I will faithfully discharge, for the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent on me as a selectman for the town of Mount Desert for a three-year term beginning May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, according to the Constitution and the law of the state. So help me God.
Do I swear I will support the Constitution of the United States and this state so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof. I, Brian Hinkle, do swear that I will faithfully discharge, for the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent on me as a member of the Mount Desert Elementary School Board for a three-year term beginning May seventh, twenty-one point four, according to the Constitution and the law of the state.
I, Catherine Emery, do swear I will support the Constitution of the United States and this state so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof. I, Catherine Emery, do swear that I will faithfully discharge, for the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent on me as a member of the Mount Desert Elementary School Board for a three-year term beginning May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, according to the Constitution and the law of the state. So help me.
Anything else over there now? Okay. Okay, article three. To see if non-owners should be allowed unrecognized to speak here in the two thousand twenty-four annual town meeting. Is there a second? Any discussion about that? Okay, all in favor? Say aye. All opposed? Article three passes. Um, unless there's a question, this is loud, I am a son. Article four. Um, so an ordinance stated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Town of Mount Desert Ale Wiping needs to be enacted. The ordinance reads in its entirety, regulations for the taking of ale wipes and backpack carrying shall be as follows. For the year July first, two thousand twenty-four, June twenty, twenty twenty-five, there says no taking of ale wipes and backpack carrying in the town of Mount Desert. Got a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Article five. So an ordinance stated, uh, May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled dispersment warrant ordinance for the town of Mount Desert to be enacted and acted as set forward. And below that is, um. A line, it's basically crossing on a lot and the effective date of the ordinance is May seventh, two thousand twenty-four. There's an explanation for that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? If at any point someone feels like I'm not reading enough of an ordinance, you just let me know. Article six, so an ordinance stated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Consumer Fireworks Ordinance for the Town of Mount Desert to be enacted is set forth below. Here's the ordinance, enacted May, it's changing the amended date to May seventh, two thousand twenty-four instead of May twenty-four. Any discussion of the fireworks? All those in favor? Was opposed? Okay. In my opinion, the ayes have it. I look late. Miss Lane is providing. Your notice is adopted pursuant to the. What, what is this? It says. We'll do article seven. Shall an ordinance stated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Special amusement permit ordinance for the town of Mount Desert be enacted as set forth below? Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? In my opinion, the ayes have it. Now we'll do article eight. Shall an ordinance dated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Amendments to the Land Use Zoning Ordinance and the Town of Mount Desert Sewer Ordinance regarding exceptions to connecting to public sewer be enacted as set forth below? Then this is a correction of references. Anyone want to discuss? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article nine. So an ordinance stated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Amendments to the Land Use Zoning Ordinance to modify the setback standards for lots around Little Echo Lake be enacted as set forth in appendix A, page thirty-four.
Second time.
Any discussion? Question? All those in favor? All those opposed? Helps agree feel if the ayes are in the desk. Thank you. Article ten, so an ordinance stated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Amendments to the Land Use Zoning Ordinance regarding individual private campsites be enacted as set forth in appendix B, page thirty-six. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article eleven, so an ordinance stated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Amendments to the Land Use Zoning Ordinance regarding permitted conditional and excluded uses for residential dwelling units be enacted as set forth in appendix C. Any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Article twelve, so an ordinance stated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Amendments to section five point four of the Land Use Zoning Ordinance, notification, responsibility for conditional use, approval process be enacted as set forth below. And the explanatory note is. All those in favor, excuse me, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article twelve. Article thirteen. Shall an ordinance stated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Amendments to the Land Use Zoning Ordinance regarding dimensional requirements for residential dwelling units and accessory dwellings be enacted as set forth in appendix D, page forty.
Second time.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article fourteen, so an ordinance stated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Amendments to the Land Use Zoning Ordinance to clarify the timing for approval of permits be enacted as set forth below. Any discussion of any kind? Favor? Opposed? Article fifteen. Shall an ordinance stated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Amendments to the Land Use Zoning Ordinance required by the standards for certificates of occupancy as set forth in appendix E, page forty-two. Any discussion? All those opposed? Some favorite? Article fifteen passes. Article sixteen. Shall an ordinance stated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Amendments to the Land Use Zoning Ordinance regarding access to lot be enacted as set forth? Any discussion? All those in favour? All those opposed? Article sixteen passes. Article seventeen, shall an ordinance dated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled amendments to the land use zoning ordinance regarding definitions be enacted as set forth in Appendix H. Okay, any discussion? All those in favour? All those opposed? Article seventeen passes. Shall an ordinance entitled amendments to subdivision ordinance of the town of Mount Desert regarding affordable housing development be enacted and agreed to be in compliance with the standard of title three dash A, section four, three, six, four? Any discussion? All those in favour? Opposed? Article ninety. Shall an ordinance dated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled amendments to land use zoning ordinance for marine and freshwater contractors being acted as set forth in Appendix H. Any discussion? All those in favour? Opposed? Article twenty, shall an ordinance dated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled amendments to land use zoning ordinance modifications related to non-informers be enacted as set forth below? In sections four of Mount and four, conformities, this hearing, don't forget the bad end. All those in favour? Opposed? Article twenty passes, article twenty-one. Shall an ordinance dated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled amendments to the land use zoning ordinance to change the land use district designation of X map ten lots oh four eight through oh one, oh four eight, yes, from one through oh one nineteen, apportioned back to X to Z and oh one four, be enacted as set forth below? Any discussion? Article twenty-two. All those in favour? He can't auto pardon, I'm sorry, all those opposed? Now we're going. Shall an ordinance dated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, entitled short-term rental and vacation rental licensing ordinances be enacted? See Appendix page fifty-three, and it's all laid out there. Any, this, I have to ask for discussion first, any discussion? Go ahead, record. Oh, please do. Give them like, you want to ban in facing that way? Let's see. Hello, everybody, this is probably the biggest turnout we've had for a a long time. I suspect that there's something to do with this ordinance. And this is a very impacted regulation. I am totally amazed that the select board decided to bring it forward in a town meeting instead of a referendum vote, where you would have gotten a better broad check and turnout. I urge you to vote no for broader breathing. It's detrimental to the few remaining year-round residents in this town. We've already given up on the ability to afford property here. And many of us still live here and inherited home over here for a long time. Part of our ability to stay here is to rent out our properties. Historically, my family's been doing it for over a hundred and forty years. They would rent out their year-round winter home, move to a summer cottage or a small annex, and they did this on a year-round basis, uh, every year for, uh, the last hundred and forty years, actually from eighteen seventy on. I personally do have a rented property, and I'm fortunate enough to be able to rent it on a year-round basis. Although there have been times when I had to rent it for a short time, a wedding event, uh, people wanted to stay for two weeks, uh, things like that. It's a indecisive, uh, economic situation for the best part. But we're all, our ability to stay in this town, uh, has a lot to do with the income that we receive from rented property. We have to adjust annually. And we'll look at, when we read the town report, our town evaluation keeps going up, up and up. But surprisingly, you would think that would cover the cost of the tax increase, never does. Look at your new mill rate for this year. And look at the historic increases in the mill rate over the years. This is a whole new bureaucracy the town would like to create. There is limited amount of applicants. If you happen to miss a year and you don't reapply, theoretically, you're going to be breaking the law. Older residents had the potential to not pass folk requirements. I mean, if you have a house that's probably older than fifty years old, we didn't have a lot of the inspection requirements that we have now. This ordinance is, uh, about twenty-five hundred pages long. And I hope everybody has read it thoroughly. I, uh, urge you to reject this concept and vote no. Uh, any more comments? Um, as we go along, it would be good if we could do pro con, pro con, pro con, but, um, you had your hand up, so anyways.
Thank you very much for letting us, letting us speak, my name is Penelope Smith Redden, I am, was born in Otter Creek, grew up in Otter Creek. I am a legal resident of the town of Mount Desert, but I am actually a military. While I vote in this town, I cannot live like this. I had at least three years before I could retire back to this community, but I still am invested. My family's been here for centuries, many generations. I have rented out my house short-term and long-term. But I feel that it's nobody's business except for mom, what I do with my property, it's a legal activity. Whether I choose to rent it out short-term, uh, I may use that ability if I'm looking like someone. I cannot use, I cannot pay my fee, which I think is a huge punishment for somebody who's trying to maintain their house, just because, say I'm overseas. And I missed that short window. I really think that there are better ways to go about getting a new code enforcement officer, if that's what the purpose of this really is. Like I said before, housing will never be affordable here for the middle-class individual, the working-class individual. Uh, I think that there are better ways to go about doing what the intent, whatever the intent is, and I don't think we even really know, without punching those of us who have inherited for our problems who save the diseases until we can retire back to. My stepmother inherited family property from my dad, and he passed away, she has to rent them out to pay the inheritance. Uh, if she doesn't, if she misses, she gets sick and she misses that window, she's going to lose that opportunity and perhaps houses that landing inherit when she passes away. So I think that there are so many different reasons why we do what we do, but really it's not the town's business to regulate that. And I really hope that people will vote against this. Thank you.
Any more comment? Sense? Just as an aside, I think applying things considered you're bad for. Where you're supposed to be talking.
Another part of this process is just, you're supposed to be speaking this way. Thank you. Thank you, Jerry, I'm Sam V, resident of the town of Mount Desert, and I just wanted to speak a few words, I'm not in support of this ordinance as drafted. Uh, the most problematic part about it for me is the proposed ten percent cap on licenses. I do support creating more flexibility and inclusion in our land and building use regulations, moat, more housing units and options in our town, uh, whether that uses on a short-term basis, long-term basis, and whether it's owned or rented. This ordinance does the opposite by limiting an existing right of use on private property. As my uncle Rick said, our family has rented their properties on a short-term basis, on and off since my great-great-grandparents started welcoming summer visitors to their home in eighteen seventy. In the early two thousands, after my money died, we inherited a home from her and offered it on a short-term rental basis for about eight years, basically to cover the costs. And that enabled us to basically put the house on ice until we had the opportunity to move back here on a year-round basis. It was really a key ingredient to me being able to move back here with my family and live here full-time, something I'd always dreamed of doing. And so looking out into the future, I'm thinking about my children, who will hopefully inherit these properties someday from Jen and me, and I don't want to foreclose that opportunity for them. What if they live away? What if this isn't their primary year-round residence at the time? What if they, the cap is going to exceed it? When we attended a public hearing about this back in March eleven, I asked whether or not we got any data on, um, numbers of residential units in the town. Uh, I think what Kyle said to me at the time, and Kyle, please correct me if I'm wrong, there's about twenty-six hundred and eleven residential dwellings in the town of Mount Desert. Four hundred and twenty of those are second or seasonal homes, or sixteen percent of the housing stock. So then you've got a ten percent cap here. Good one, a foul sixteen percent might be offered up as short-term rentals. I feel like that's going to create a conflict, and it might result in a situation like the Morinfield down in northeast harder, where you're on a wait list for years and years and years before you can get a license. I guess I'd also, I see that there's a fee schedule proposed, um, but do we know what the expense is administrating? This is, I think, before we're asked to vote on something like this, we should have a financial analysis of what it's going to cost, so hire people to, you know, both administrate it and enforcement to meet it, so. I can't consort it because I don't have enough information to make an informed financial decision either. I, I know that there were negative impact, quote-unquote, mentioned in the ordinance, I think we got to be specific about what those are because one's person is negative, there's another person's positive. Um, if one of the unspoken goals of this ordinance though is to create more year-round housing, I think it should say so. I do appreciate the work and long hours of our town leaders, um, to try to make our community more viable year-round. Um, that said, I don't believe this particular ordinance does that. Last year I did vote, uh, write a letter of support for the Heal Way project. That project was designed, um, consistent with the two thousand nine comprehensive plan of the town. Um, out of that came the cluster subdivision ordinance that promoted that kind, reassure that kind of housing. That, you get behind that, seems to be consistent with us, you know, an articulated strategy, but this, the short-term rental is drafted this month. Thank you for your reality.
No, I'm, Jeff Wood, select board member, um, just to clarify a few things, I, I wasn't really planning on speaking, but I, I was kind of hopeful that, that some of the community that I know feel the same way as I do, um, would, um, to clarify, a person or a home that's been rented for a hundred and forty years in order to afford to stay there, will never be impacted. Never, that, it's not, it's not going to happen, okay? So if you maintain that residence, you, you, there's no cap if you call that your residence, period. If you get in and, and you get, if you have a home that is not your primary residence, and you apply for that permit, the cap is not applied in twenty twenty-five. Anybody that has a, currently has a home that they rent out as a business, is more than welcome to apply for that permit, and they will be able to maintain that forever. And until, and even, even if the children that you have, or your parents, or another person in the immediate family inherit that property, that, that license is permanent, will travel with them. Fee, and, and to clarify again, the cost is mainly, it's been calculated, but the person and the people that are responsible for that, that all has been enumerated in the budget, um, and it's part of the, of the, the code enforcement office budget. We have figured out, and we don't know exactly how many of each type of rental we have, but by our best estimates, it will, um, create revenue in excess of what's needed to cover the salary, insurance, and other, uh, aspects of another employee. Someone in the neighborhood, a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, depending on how close we are in our businesses, different types of rentals. We are not trying to take anyone's right to do what they've been doing away. Part of what we're trying to do is to send the tide of homes being sold to people that don't live in them. The people that currently own homes, the people that have been here for a long time, we absolutely urged you a year ago, and we dropped it from the warrant list. Did a lot of work to try to make sure that we didn't infringe upon the rights of people who have existing situations. Not at all. What we do know, and what we all know, is that houses are being sold without people even looking at them, because they can very easily make three, four, five times the mortgage. And they also can easily go to the bank, whose business is not those who led us over and sort of thing, and say, well, here's my proposal, I went by this six hundred thousand dollar house, and I'm going to make this much money off it. The bank is certain of them. These houses are vanished. We're not trying to make the argument that that six hundred thousand dollar house is going to be sold to a server at a restaurant. That is not, we're not trying to solve the long, the workforce housing situation. We are trying to contribute to stopping the tide of houses disappearing from the stock. Okay, that is where we're at. So I really urge you to read carefully, no one here has a situation, is, it's currently satisfactory to them, will lose them. No, period, ever, provided, yes, don't forget to, to apply on its knowledge. And why do we need to win that? So that's, I, I just felt the need to speak on behalf of the, of the people in support of this ordinance. We have empty homes, more and more every year than we ever did, and everybody knows it. Part of the reason that houses, that housing prices skyrocket, it's not just because we live in this beautiful place, but because people are willing to bid over asking prices without even looking, because they know they're going to make millions of dollars on it. Those people are not town residents, those people don't know, yeah, about what we do here. That's where we're at, that's where we're facing.
My name is Jerry Open, I'm a legal resident of the town of Otter Creek, town of Mount Desert. Um, I've lived here for twenty-five plus years. I ran a small business on a little property in Otter Creek while raising my babies. And lo and behold, I'm really good at my job. So saved all my money and worked very hard, took a leap of faith to open a business in Bar Harbor that continued to grow. In 2018, I purchased 124 cottage streets with the plan to build a year-round lawnmower front door. In order to afford something like that in downtown Bar Harbor, we had to build short-term rentals to pay for it. COVID hit. We relied 100% on that short-term rental income. The planning board approved our plan. Then the short-term rental passed in Bar Harbor. We worked through COVID. COVID didn't bring us down. We worked through the staffing crisis. That didn't bring me down. You know what brought me down? The town of Bar Harbor and the short-term rental permitting, the punitive result being three business days late getting my permit fee in. So I'm going to encourage each and every one of you to please think long and hard before you make this vote tonight. And I'm going to encourage you to vote no on this because I have lost more than any of you can ever imagine at the hands of the town of Bar Harbor. And I entrusted in them to approve my business plan. I went from paying $1,300 a year in property taxes for that vacant lot that was vacant for 10 years before I developed it and turned it into a beautiful wellness center for our year-round community. I was three days late, people. How can you guarantee this community that if because you're a human being and you're late for one reason or another, that you're not going to take away everything? My husband has worked so hard for his whole life. His parents before him have worked so hard for their whole life. They don't have the luxury of inheriting anything. I don't have the luxury of having a trust fund. I have nothing else to fall back on except the ability for my body to do work like so many of us in the middle class. So I'm going to encourage each and every one of you to really think about this vote and what it can do. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kate Chafflin. I'm a resident of Mount Desert here in northeast harbor. And it's true that right now, because I live in the house that I own, that I can rent that house if I need to. But five years down the road, if I find myself in a situation where either I can't live in it or if I die, my children won't be able to rent it. And if they can't rent it, if they're not living there, if they're not able to be, you know, in state and they want to hang on to my house, they would have to be able to, they'd have to sell it. And I think that, you know, to say yes, right now, right here, your needs as residents are being met and being able to protect their homes by hanging on to them and renting them because you live there and you rent them, you get the permit. That's true, but it's not anticipating the future. Not in support of this. And I've been vocal in some of the hearings, so I'm not going to go over some of the other things that I've said before, but my mantra has always been correlation, not causation. Short-term rentals don't cause housing prices to go up. Housing prices go up because it's a free market. That's the way it works. And short-term rentals are correlation of those increased housing costs. And I think that every single person who lives in the town of Mount Desert and enjoys having their house would say he would not rent it if we didn't need to, whether they're seasonal visitors or year-round visitors. There's a very small handful of people who do invest in this area and rent out on a regular basis and, you know, treat them as an investment property. Very small percentage. And to take this, use this ordinance to recap the rest of us in order to discourage those few people from purchasing houses is just not, it doesn't make any economic sense. There are other ways to get workforce housing, get sustainable housing. We should probably encourage the town to explore those options instead.
You're not pretty good at not fact. No, not yet. The only reason I'm saying that is that everybody that wants to speak is not spoken yet. No, you mean, we're still in discussion. So my personal theory, you're allowed to overrule me on this. If somebody has something to say about this, this is their chance. So if you hold off a bit, we may get to that. You're up.
The one open phone in the wall. My belief is that when you're looking at a problem, you first of all identify what that problem is. Now Jeff, playing very well, the type of rent we do not like to see in long desert. People who are just buying homes, make a profit. And they're not complaining of living in them. That's the problem. But how many of those homes exist? We don't know that. I don't know. Does anybody know? Those homes actually are in the town of Mount Desert? We're getting all of them now, or maybe tomorrow, maybe. We're not just all, all just concerned about those. Type rent for Jeff's plan, completely out. And let's find out how many of those rentals, properties exists before we come up with an ordinance. Now this ordinance, Dr. Mark said it was, it is seven pages. It has 55 rules, regulations, definitions, and unintentional consequences for any of those. What might they be? So we might find by asking this ordinance that that really, that many of these homes I would be concerned about. But if we pass this ordinance, we'll have this ordinance that all the people that are renting are now running the deal room in the bureaucracy, et cetera. I don't, I think we should first find out how many of these homes exist. It wouldn't be difficult. I look at my neighborhood and there's actually 24 buildings in my neighborhood. Sure, this is my home that are rentals property. And they have 26 actual rentals. Two of the homes have two rentals. But none of them are these offensive rentals that Jeff has planned. So let's, I think we should find out how many of these offensive properties exist and we can do that easily. I can find that in my neighborhood. I just leased a house in the neighborhood. And I think people who are, I know that a lot of people are deeply concerned about this. I read others in the newspaper. They must know how many of these offensive rentals are being narrated. I think if you draw a committee, you can determine how many of these offensive properties exist and then create an ordinance to deal with that. So I would propose to delay this, get the information so we first know what the problem is before we come up with a solution.
Any more comments, Eric?
I'm on the island and I live here. I'm a resident of Mount Desert. My concern with this, and I confess to not being totally educated on this. We had medical reasons. I had to be out of town during a couple of the hearings and stuff, and so I'm behind the ball. But if a goal, I'm not convinced that regulations like this can defeat the market forces. I think the market forces, you have to find other ways to make year-round housing attractive enough and fair enough. And that usually involves a system by which if you have to support working people's living, you need to do it in a way that moves with the market in its long term. I, my personal experience here, I bought a house in progress before I moved back. I'm so glad I did. And I, I've been in that seven years. I rented it so I could continue to stay here. My parents died. We had to redo the house. And we had to rent it really for three summers while we re, while we redid the house. And these things were not anticipated. We, I know we're assuming that those things will develop. I'm very suspicious of regulation that tries to... I don't think you're solving the problem that we think is there. And that's my problem, you know, because I really am convinced that this actually solves the housing problem that exists. And I know it's huge and I don't want dark neighborhoods. And northeast harbor, that direction, southwest harbor, we've been headed that way. And it's a real problem, but I don't think this is a solution.
Jennifer Feltwell, also from Otter Creek, and active-duty army and look forward to retiring here next year. And we just built a house on the creek, so very excited about that. So I do think, as I said very nicely, that there's more risk and benefit to this ordinance. You know, you still cook the 140-year-old home and being able to rent it out, true. They could rent it out if they maintain the annual permit, if they don't miss the deadline, if they anticipate the need. And they also have passed the new codes, so they may not be able to rent it out. If that's not, if I'm misspeaking, you correct me after. But that's how I understand the ordinance. It sounds like, although the sheet, the summer sheet says it's not true, that we're looking at this as a way to increase housing stock, but also make it more affordable, and that's laudable. But this does create undue burden, increase unnecessary restrictions. And the thing is, the houses, if you find another way to avoid commercial purchase for investment rentals, there may be other ways. So there may be other ways to look at, you know, you have to live here in the house for five years, have it be your primary residence, then you can rent, just like they have some of Airbnb. So there may be other things, or tax breaks for year-round rental if you rent it to someone year-round. So there may be other things, and I like that the illegitimate said about being a referendum. It should be a referendum, not something in the town meeting so that everybody participates in this higher participation. But what you may essentially end up doing is you may essentially cut out the new clients who are renting like we have been while we wait to come back and to be able to afford to do groundwork and to do, put in extra things in the house to make it the best possible house while we look forward to retirement here in the area. So that's what we've been able to do by doing short-term rentals. But if we miss that permit, if we miss that and don't anticipate or we miss a year, we're not going to be able to rent if we're above the cap. So that definitely could hurt our ability to continue to maintain that house if for some reason military takes us out of the country and the state again. So it does create necessary burden. But eventually what will happen is people will, will buy the houses who don't need a vacuum cleaner. Right? That's who you'll have. So you will either have people who, like us, can rent them out and afford to upkeep the houses, or you'll have people that don't need to, you know, they're so wealthy, don't need to do it. So let's just get a different way to do this. This is, this is, this is too broad. Okay, I'm a practitioner. This is too broad and amigotic. It's broad, broad faceted. We want something focused. Okay? Thank you.
Is there any further comment? Come on up. No, you're up. Oh, I didn't even see you say. Excuse me. Can you talk up your, Sabina? Your business is better. You're about to talk a bit about Greek.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sabina Wood. I am a longtime summer resident as well as a merchant on Main Street for 20 years and a summer resident for 40. I am very concerned about this ordinance for a variety of reasons, some of which haven't been mentioned tonight. And I probably am one of those people that falls into the vacation rental category. So I feel like we need to be represented tonight because though we don't live here year-round, it's sort of taxation about representation. I'm very empathetic to the year-round residents of northeast and the island who, like many have shared over the past two Zoom meetings, may have their grandmothers' or mothers' houses that they've rented. And they are very concerned about being able to hang on to those. And I appreciate what you clarified tonight for posterity for their children because if they want to go out, let's say they're working in another state or the military or something, they may not be able to afford them. I am very empathetic to the housing situation. I don't think this ordinance should be misconstrued as not a reason for improving them when it does seem that the agenda is. And I feel very uncomfortable with the language that's written here because I don't think this is the way to go about solving the problems. I think it's important that we remember the year that I was born, 1957, we are 180 million in this country and the population's almost doubled. So when you look at Bar Harbor and the needs of Bar Harbor and its growth, as the year-round population grows, the summer resident population grows and the tradesmen and all the jobs to service those people, obviously, it creates a density and housing problem. I don't think, unless I'm mistaken, and have to ask Kate and a few other people, I don't think we have as many people that Bar Harbor may have that are people that have no existing relationship with northeast or the union. Maybe in Stoneville, I'm not sure, but they are making these investments that aren't already involved in. I finally, after 25 years, was able to afford to buy a house and I'm extremely grateful. I couldn't afford to buy in northeast. I send out dates a week. I hardly make any extra money. People don't realize how hard merchants work on Main Street. But it came with a garage apartment, which I was grateful for that I can rent maybe part-time with some of their friends and friends and help for my children. I'm concerned about two things. Though it was explained to those of us that have them now or grandfather, if I don't include my house in advance five years down the line, if I retire and need to rent the house and move into garage apartment, if it's not already in the list, I might not be able to get in. I'm also very concerned about the description of how rooms will be identified. It was said in a Zoom meeting that if you have two bedrooms, we're going to throw in a good measure of luxury, so the certificate will say six. Well, if you don't have, as an example, an extra sofa bed, why should that be six? So I think, and have a problem, I think there are a lot of reasons why we shouldn't pass. Also, we have invested a lot as merchants and townspeople, both year-round and summer resident, to try to solve the economic problems that we've had post the fires and rebuilding and to try to have a thriving community, not just in the summer, but year-round and to promote year-round, younger people living here. It's very hard to run a restaurant and other businesses year-round. I think this is going to backfire. If you run the numbers, originally, everyone had summer houses that were non-winter walls because there wasn't a reason to winterize. And now houses are built and insurance and everything, the recommendation is to winterize, the house to preserve it. So differentiating between non-winterized houses and winterized houses, and it is stated, oh, because those won't be saleable year-round. I just feel really uncomfortable with this. I think we're going to limit the amount of people that will be able to rent in the summer and provide for our social and mental. Thank you for listening.
I'm Seth Singleton. I live in Hall Florida. I need a roof. Gary's always got it, though. I have since we have observation and a modest proposal. The observation is, because I went out and did a count in my neighborhood the other day, and of the 12 houses... day, and of the 12 houses nearest me, there's exactly one that's occupied. Yeah, I'm not sure why, but I think they ought to find it. So my modest proposal is that whatever we do with this ordinance is going to affect that one way or the other. We do an inventory, and we do it on the first of August, and we do it on the first of February. We find out how many houses are actually occupied, do they're owned, how many come from away. We just lost a resident in our neighborhood and there's a notice on the door because it's now owned by blah, 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 properties of Michigan. Okay. Now, a couple of those houses out of the 11 of 12 that are not occupied, as is the first of May, are indeed from away renters, but a lot of them are not. And so I'm just curious what's going on. I also think that it's a terrible shame that we have all of these very nice houses. Maybe they don't help me near me, but I don't think that's the problem in our neighborhood, that nobody uses it. I'll just leave it at that.
Is there any failure of... And then after that, there's nothing to fresh perspectives, I would suggest, because it would be time to move on.
I'm in Somestown. I live in Somestown. I saw sparkles on this. We have a problem in this community. I've lived my whole life in this. We are out of balance. Living and maintaining a community requires maintaining a semblance of balance. And right now, we have a system with absolutely no guardrails and no boundaries. And no economic system that is without any kind of guardrails and boundaries can, is ultimately successful. It always gobbles up other aspects of the community. We lose people in year-round houses all the time, and we've been doing it for decades. The enrollment in this school has consistently shrunk. It's mid to school. It's everywhere in the coast of Maine. It's everywhere in the coast of Maine. It's everywhere in many coasts, actually. This is not, this is a real problem. And it is a real problem that people are coming here simply to buy properties to monetize them. We know it's happening. We have people show up, the public here, or someone show up at the public hearing, who is buying property all over the country and is buying property here purely to put it in the short-term rental market. And what of those of us who live here? What is it like to have a neighborhood predominantly occupied by a revolving cast of seasonal residents? Is that really a neighborhood? Is that really a community? This is a very modest proposal. I don't think I've heard anybody here who has gotten a permit or who would like to get a permit, who can get one. I don't get the notion that you're going to run a business renting out a home of a boat to strangers and you're going to have a problem with needing basic life safety colors, which is all this requires, or you're going to have a problem remembering over the course of months at the end of the year to simply renew your permit. It's not that hard, and it seems like it's a minimal business requirement to expect of someone in order to help preserve and protect our community from an economic system that just allows people to show up here and take houses out of the market purely to monetize them. So I urge you to consider this in a much broader perspective. It's about what we want as a community. It's not just about our individual situations. It's about the whole community and the future of the community. What is it going to be like for kids? You talk about wanting to conserve your house for your kids. What's it going to be like when there's like nobody living in the house? You want to know why we have such a bigger budget? Well, we just have to hire and fire the Indians department and build a leader, because we no longer have the kind of people living in this town who are willing and able to volunteer to do those. So that's again, something you can't get. It's hard for firefighters, it's hard for nurses, it's hard for teachers, it's hard for anybody you can think of to live anywhere near this town. What do they have to do? They have to look for...
You're getting off topic.
And I am...
I think you are. I understand his point, his appointment, but we're dealing with this disorderment tonight, and...
And this ordinance will put a lid on people...
Then that's what you should be talking about and not the... That I'm just asking you this, David.
Thank you.
Wait, you have to wait. He's been waiting.
Thank you. I'm Gary Blaine. I'm a resident of this town. I live in Northeast Harbor. I also support this ordinance. And I have listened to what people have said, and I have talked with them outside of this meeting, and I think all of their stories are meaningful, very important there. But my understanding, since I'm looking at the ordinance, is that this is what the select board tried to take into account, when they re-practiced the ordinance from last year, which brought that peace, the things that people are talking about, about their houses and their situation, I think largely aggressed in this order. The, I think the need for information that we're also talking about is very important. I think this ordinance will enable us to get that information by having a census of all the houses in the town. I think that's critically important. And the last thing I'll say is that I think when I look at other towns, even Elswood, that this problem arises, arises before the town are ready to handle, because it's not here that. And so whatever we're doing is preemptive and we shouldn't do it until it's here. But when it's here, it's too late. And I think what Gail said is true. That then becomes a situation in which people are buying houses, cut them up and rent them out, because that's where it's at. So I urge consideration of this order.
Out of your place.
Hi, I'm Tracy Averman. I run 123 Main Street. I'm a year-round resident, and I have been against this since the beginning. But I do want to address a couple of things. You cannot legislate a market. And what you're saying when you say this person's good because they rent one way and this person's bad because they rent another way, you're deciding who gets to be here. And even if the person who rents now solely for profit, and by the way, at that public hearing, there was one person, you had countless stories of people like me who rent their house, countless stories of the people who have spoken here, and you had one story of a guy who came to protect his property because he stays in it two weeks a year and then rents it and buys property as a... We cannot...
Tracy, he doesn't actually stay in two weeks a year.
Oh, okay, well, I don't, that's what he said at the meeting. I didn't. Okay, so anyway, my opinion is, it is not for five people to decide who gets to live in our town and what they do with our property. I really think this is legislation for legislation's sake. We watch Bar Harbor pass this. It's been nothing but a shitshow since it started. Now we're following, because we said we'd done something. But we are trying to do something. And there are other things that we can do, like trying to figure out a way for people to get on this island, instead of everybody having to live on an island where there's 60% national park and there's only a limited amount of places to live. But for you to say to me, I'm gonna, I'm going to ban people from investing here, well, that drives property prices down. And guess what?
Yeah, I mean, what? You're supposed to be discussing the problem and not saying that you, 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 and then anything. But it's even parry views. Talk about, talk about the, talk about the area.
Okay. To legislate, for legislation's sake. We're creating $112,000 position that we need anyway for other things, and we're using this to cover it. I think that's unfair to put it on the back of short-term rental homes. And the discussion of the school sizes and all, this has been going on for years. I mean, I've been here for almost 30 years. This discussion's been the same, this stuff, every year. What people don't like is that property prices have jumped dramatically. But again, it's not our business to legislate who lives here and who buys property here. So I disagree with almost everything Gail said. I think turning someone's private property into a community event is one step toward common sense.
Okay, now...
You just don't have to say what I think.
Well, excuse me, you are out of line. You're drawing one step away from this. Tracy, it's in my right as a model raver to tell you when you are out of line. And I see that you are... Good.
We are not legislating to actually...
Point, point taken. I can't hear a word yourself. We still have some people that have not spoken. If you wish, this discussion has to be by universal consent. Is there consent? That's right. And now you have to have a complete consent for it to take action. You can read it here, you're like, come on up. We would need universal consent to move the motion at this point. Anybody, all those in favor? All those opposed? Still not members? Go ahead. Unless people are going to come up with some really incredibly new theories, it would be nice, as far as I'm concerned, to do some term case studies.
Hello, my name is Peter Frifari. I'm a year-round resident. I'll read really quick. I have a child here in memory school. I just wanted to say that you were lucky enough to buy a home on the I I seven years ago. We almost didn't get it. I've been here for 15 years. We, the other person who's been by the home, but it's for rental, with cash, but the owners were nice enough to see that they wanted to support the community, and so we were able to get them on. Now, we cannot afford, we would not be able to afford to live in this, live in this town. Over $100,000 median home price. Speaking, because I haven't heard any young families talk about how they can even enter this community. It's basically impossible. So what I like about this ordinance is it does not limit monthly rentals. So I respect people who are living off of their rentals. This does not impact these people. But it would promote more long-term renting, as is short-term renting will always be an option. So families who want to move here, who can't afford to live here, could potentially have more opportunities to rent, as well as more homes in the market. There are very few homes to buy and very expensive. And so I see how anybody can actually enter this community. But everybody is just kind of hospitalized for... Thank you.
My name is Kara Ryan. I live in Bar Harbor, so I'm here at Millen Carrow. I supported our location rental cap because I was seeing a lot of our houses get bought by people on the way. Just bought as many as they could and they took them out. A lot of people came forward to oppose the vacation rental cap, and they said, what I've heard tonight, that it's a handful of people. And I wondered, so I got my hands on the list just this past, like, six months. I looked up the 500 non-owner occupied vacation renters in Bar Harbor, and I cross-listed it with our online tax database. 300 of the 500 do not have Bar Harbor land addresses. Most of them are not in state of Maine. They're in Utah, they're in Insepsus, they're in Florida, they're all over the country. And they, you know, this is a new ranking. This is not a 100% solution. It's one piece of it. It's one tool that a town can use to try to support its communities as it needs. We also have in our, our code enforcement officer every year reminds people to renew. I voted from Chinese country. I have voted while abroad, because it's important to me, and that's just because it's my demographic, right? If having a house, having that income is that important to people, and they're getting reminded in to renew that permit, I would think they could, they could renew that. I know it's sad and... feels, it's very certain people fail to renew their... But I'm just saying, the important point I wanted to make is that it may seem like a handful, it may not be a handful. A lot of your dark houses is owned by people who are in a part of your community, but the commercial is just happening. Thank you.
Hi, I'm O'Keele Rose Somestown. Jared, I believe that we're going to pay her this ordinance. It seems to me that there's some misunderstanding and some exaggerations and... I'm wondering if it would be appropriate for you to read, because your voice is there at night, what it does and what it doesn't do from the... Is it to the selectmen for fairness?
It makes...
So this is what the selectmen have said and explored it, but very understandable. It accurately, in my opinion, accurately reflects what the ordinance actually says. I'd like you to read it.
Is anybody having an objection to me reading what you just said? All right. All right, let's do it this way. All those in favor of having me read this letter, say aye. opposed? This is good. Hand, hand, hand out. We'll have to do it by hand and count. I had dinner with her. Read something that comes off the floor. And yeah, anything that's not available. Sorry, maybe we're a little... So everyone's a voter. What? She can read it without us. If you want. I already think it's making an account, eh? Okay.
This is prepared by the selectmen. Okay, can you hear it now? Okay, what it does, it identifies and differentiates between three types of rental property, the first two of which would fall under the same licensing requirements, no cap, below fee. Rentals that serve as a primary residence or are located on a property that serves as, to be called short-term rentals. Rentals that cannot serve, pardon me, rentals that cannot serve as a primary residence because they are not suitable, such as... because they are not suitable such as non-winterite camps and cottages to be called seasonal rentals. Rental properties that do not serve as a primary residence and rent for short term to be called vacation rentals. It provides the town the capacity to know how many and what type of rental properties exist in Mount Desert. It provides for all, for any and all permanently owned rental practices to continue provided licenses are obtained and continually renewed. It also allows for any existing licenses to be transferable within the current owner's family, allowing for generationally continued practices. It provides for the funding of a needed position in the code enforcement office to assist the CEO and also to manage the monitoring and licensing processes for rental properties without adding an additional tax burden to residents. It attempts to limit the extent to which residential properties are sold as investments in the future by tackling the percentage of the year round properties in town which are eligible to be licensed as vacation rentals. All current vacation rentals are granted. What it does not do, what it doesn't do. It does not require that the homeowner be on premises at all times. It does not set a minimum number of nights or restrict how an owner chooses to market or pay you their rental to their own standards. It does not require an inspection. It does not require a new sound at the end of your driveway or in your front yard. It does not restrict the addition of future rental units on an existing residential property provided such additions are approved under the building codes of Mount Desert. Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion? Mia?
Thank you all, pardon me briefly. Um, a number of these items are, have been touched on, but I want to reiterate. Um. The, the, the concept of the permits. So right now, if I were renting my house, I have to apply for a permit. And then I may not rent my house because I just want to have that permit so that I am taking away an opportunity for someone that wants to rent that property. Which sort of seems competing for her. Um, so in the future, I might do that now. So because I don't know what my future is with that house and what I'm going to do with it. So I think that could very much limit, um, people's opportunities in the future. Um, second, there's a couple of unintended consequences based on demographics of potential buyers. Um, one of which is that some of the, um, people that purchase, purchase in anticipation of retirement. And they do that and they, they want to buy a house and in order, they could have still worked another ten years, they'll say. They want to be able to rent out their property while they do that. So that they can come and live here and be a vital part of this community, which are extremely valuable to, to our community. So that because of the limit of being on it, they won't be able to do that. Um, in, in a financially stale way. Renting by the month, the math doesn't always work to cover your mortgage. And renting by the week or, or two weeks can make it work. So therefore you can afford it and then move here. So that's one. And the other is, um, potential example of B. And I have children, one child here who bought a piece of land. But the others down the road may want to be here. If I am no longer here resident in the house, but I want to keep it potentially for my child and I don't have the rental queue or car or I'm no longer there, then that income is not potentially there to support that next generation. And I find that, um, restrictive and unintended consequences. Um, as regards to B, I just want to say that I'd love to solve a year-round housing dilemma. But I just don't see that the economic model of the system would work. And the two hundred and fifty dollars, which I don't know if that's a true number or not. But whatever it is, it'd be to do this is strictly for, as I understand it, for administration. If I would like to see that money into this town to choose to do this be put into solving the problem, not hiring one person, although job creation is one thing. Um, we have to solve the problem and how are we going to raise the money to do that? How are we going to be able to buy some land, maybe make some taxes benefits for some of?
Raising can be upside, this is hard, artists.
Okay, so awesome. Um, and almost done. So this is.
I just figured that would be the most.
Yeah, yeah. So unfortunately, the force has sort of left a barn, the team's out of bottle. Yeah, we need to try to bring it back. This is something we discussed thirty years ago when I was on the warrant committee. And we do need to solve it. I don't necessarily feel that the way that this ordinance is drafted and the unintended consequences of some of these buyers or potential owners and current residents. Um, will just do that job. And I hope that we can find something that will.
Awesome. We work really long and hard on this all these. And I know that a lot of you don't like it and don't think it's going to solve the problems. And I agree with you, it's not going to solve the problems. But it's small piece of what may be able to help staunch the flow of houses into short-term rentals. People who want to hang on to their houses, instead of rent them, either through having a license for short-term rental or how about renting it long-term so that people can come and live in our community? This, this ordinance, we tried to make it address people's concerns. But prior last year, it didn't work, nobody liked it. So we went back and spent a lot of time and effort putting together something that we thought would work for the town while allowing the tradition that exists in this town of renting your house. Uh, so you can go to camp for the summer or you earn some extra money or the bigger taxes. This, this ordinance is not going to solve the problem, as I said. But it's something we can do. And setting that limit of ten percent, which only applies to outside investors, does not apply to people renting their own house to their garage apartment or whatever. That does not kick in till March, the end of March, twenty twenty-five. That means that anyone currently renting on a short-term basis can continue to do so as long as they get their license and renew their license forever. We're here tonight because we live in this community and we love it. And we value having a community that lives it. People that we know, we might not like everybody, but we know them. And they're used to them. We know their kids. We knew them when they were young and now we know them when they're old. And there's something really wonderful about them. So let's vote for this ordinance and vote to support our community so that we can have a vibrant, close-knit, year-round town for years to come. Thank you.
Hello, thank you all for being here today. My name is Isaac Robertson. I'm from the town of Mount Desert up here. I feel like this is a lot of stick and not much care. And we need to incentivize because the bill goes, this, this is not on a do that, I'm not even thinking.
Wow. Forever D H G. You guys have some news for these guys? Okay, come on up.
I just want to point out that the, one of the bullet points on here says what the ordinance does not do. It says it does not restrict the addition of future rental units on an existing residential property provided such additions are approved under the building codes. I would say that that's inaccurate. I think it's probably unintentionally not accurate. If you had a property that, let's say you had a vacant property that fell into the vacation rental category because it was not your primary real estate, whether your primary home was located, it was a separate property. If it fell into the vacation rental category and the capper existed, then you would, you would be restricted. So I, I just think that this is inaccurate.
Sorry to speak twice, but just to clarify, my, one of my fundamental problems is I don't see data that says that this will address the real problem. Does Bar Harbor, for example, I, I don't think they're much better off since they've been trying to regulate this than they were before. But we have numbers that show this actually will work to do what we'd like to do. Because we all agree, I think, as to what we'd like, we'd like to prevent dark houses in the wintertime and, and people from away owning the places. But you know, you're just as far away as you're either yourself. I was, would have been a person from away because my address was in Texas for a while. But I needed to have a house and needed to have these things on. So I, I, I'm really concerned we have data to support this kind of a restrictive approach that has any impact in the vast housing number of year-round people. Because I just had a season.
If they don't have, they also speak required.
There might be additional, um, year-round rentals in Bar Harbor since they had the ordinance that it won't include the notice.
I'd like to move the question by written ballot. So no.
Okay. Ask us a written ballot, it's not a problem. Is there anybody else that needs to say something that hasn't said it? It's going to go home and call me up and complain later. Then I would entertain a motion. Give a second. Hey, this will be by written ballot. Pardon me? We do have to vote on a motion to move the, oh. So we're going to move the motion, all those in favor? Those opposed? I think the ayes. Um, all right. This is a long process. Start the lines, you come in. You get it, so I get you. No, they're going to give you ballots that say yes or no and you put one in a box. Um, so you need to show your yellow card when you come up so that we know that you're not a communist infiltrator sneaking in here. Uh, that's over. So. Same here. It's about awesome.
So yeah.
Eric. It's like a, I'm having to see where this is because I store it in Valdez, the space of three. He says he made.
Oh, I'm sorry to speak with him. Just can't. I have to.
Forbid. All things best for.
After the ridiculous, really fast process of voting, while they're counting the ballots, we have a couple of announcements, some presentations, and a. He might.
He. So. That's. And. It's. I will. Do. See. So. It's. I don't. Actually. It's. Excellent. This. This. In. Also. Seeing. It's. The. Like. We're. See. Is. Last. You. Want. You. Is. When it's. I saw it. So. Next. What? But. It's. But we've. Started.
All right, we're gonna get down to the end of the series of raffle. It's gonna go on. Right. Uh, two lobster trap cans, two earth machines, uh, composters. Something that I can't read without that glasses, two countertop collectors and two rain barrel. You have to be here to take it home and you have to take it home tonight because they don't know how to do it. Anymore? If you want to volunteer to come get. numbers out. No. I think. It's either. They could. I was signed into. Across the pair. Number seven, six, eight, three, five, one. Everybody wanted to know. Seven, six, eight, three, five, five. Anybody? We're just gonna keep going till we find somebody. Seven, six, eight, three, nine, six. People have snuck up already. More chances we need. Yeah. You gotta keep going with these. All these. Seven, six, eight, three, five, zero. You win one. What people? Uh, not a lot of track. Two. The big black. Collectors. Reciting. Or. Want to be. Waiting. One last. Is gone and let's keep picking numbers. Yes. Wow, everybody misses. So. PDs. Lobsters, rat, compost. One, uh, black earth machine, compost, the round things would look like. Two countertop collectors, they assume are we start for ways. Our. Radiator. Got a rain barrel, a collector. Who's the same. One rain barrel. One. Seven, six, eight, two, four, seven. Yes. Uh, seven, six, eight, two, three, five. Is that you, Karen? What do you want? Even if you want to get up, man, which would you love? Counterback. Were they? Lobster trap. Lobsters. With lobster trap. Compost. All right, it's all yours. Seven, six, eight, two, four, one. All right, which one do you want? There's those lobster trap composters, earth machine composters, countertop collectors left. One countertop collector. So there's one of these, it's getting more competitive. Bingo sometime more exciting. Seven, six, eight, three, oh, eight. Keep coming. Seven, six, eight, three, one, one. Oh, there I heard a wow, you must have won. Just a little more enthusiasm. What do you want? Lobsters, rabbit, composters, earth machine, the big black ones. Countertop collector or a rain barrel? Yep, one countertop. Was an elected last. So. Tell us. Seven, six, eight, two, nine, one. Uh, you get on the lobster. Composter and earth, is it compost or a rain barrel? That's the last of the rain barrel. Take it with you when you leave at the end of the night after we voted on all the areas. Seven, six, eight, three, five, nine. There you go. There's a lobster trap composter left and the, um. Bird machine, one of the black composters or one of the lobster trap. That's the layer thing over there. You're all just enjoying. Uh, two, seven, six, eight, two, eight, nine. Oh, oh, oh. So you, you get a couple. Right? You've left. Uh, you wanna do your thing? Clearly. You're left. You're left, you wanna do your presentation? Well, John's do a.
Good evening, everyone. My name's John. Um, I'm here for one purpose only and that is to award this lovely telething bag. Oh. This, uh. Spirit of America over there. Uh, this is an award that is intended to, uh, recognize volunteers. Um, starting small. Definitely, but consider this other. It is my pleasure this year to award the spirit of America to Gary Miller. He'd ever turn around. Gary's gonna cry. Um, I just wanna say I have many stories about Gary. I've known him for about thirty years as long as I've been up here. Um, but I don't think anything, any of them, um, I should be sharing publicly. So. Gary, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I've got very few awards. Right?
David, you wanna talk? You can come up. That one's, we're really social.
I'm David Knoll, uh, on behalf of Dorf Knoll, just from one hundred blocks. I'd like to thank the select board for giving her the Boston Post game. I'd like to thank Jerome, uh, Claire and, uh, John for being there in ceremony on Thursday. I'd like to thank, uh, Martha Dutton for all her work behind the scenes, even though she shouldn't be there, as she said. But it was a fine, very nice ceremony. The Boston Post came in, it's on display at the grass store, nothing's out of her, along with the, uh, uh. All right. Uh, if anybody wants to go see it, she enjoyed herself a great deal and she's at, uh, Magnolia in Mel's. Uh. But it was a fine ceremony and I appreciate all the, the select board for knowing me and thank you.
Um, here's the, uh. We did like it. Um, Article twenty-two written ballot. Uh, there were seventy-two yeses and a hundred and thirty-four nos for a total of two oh six. So Article twenty-two does not pass. Uh, all right. We'll move on to the important. I'm sure most of you that are still didn't notice already, but we really need a quorum of fifty voting members and we have. In my research. Psychologists had to postpone town meetings. There were forty-seven people here and they couldn't vote. So if you can at all last through the rest of the. Four, five pages, uh, we'd appreciate it greatly. Can everybody hold up the yellow cards if you, so we can see, so we know that they're here. I'm done. There's this. I confess. Murdered down. We have just the right number, so nobody can. Article twenty-three. To see if it happens to the town of Mount Desert, we'll vote to authorize the select board to assess conditional gifts, gifts. MRSA thirty dash eight, five, six, five, four, unconditional gifts, MRSA thirty dash eight, five, six, five, five. Equipment proceeds from sale are required under funds on behalf of the municipal store. It's understood that any funds received will be placed in the fire department reserve. Why? Do I have a notice? Any discussion? Go. Uh, twenty-three passes, well, we should vote. I bet it's gonna pass. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you for doing. Article twenty-four, to see if the town of Mount Desert will vote to authorize the select board to assess and exclude on behalf of the town. Additional state federal and other funds, including gifts and grants, as well as funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act. And similar legislation received during the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. For town purposes, provided that such additional funds do not require expenditure of local funds not previously. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article twenty-five, under lease agreements in excess of private roads, to see if they have access to Mount Desert, we'll vote to authorize the select board. Release a portion of the so-called visitor center at the northeast harbor arena for the ticket, ticket booth operators for a term of one year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four. Under such terms, this is select board in its sole, the perfect means to be in the best. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article twenty-five passes, Article twenty-six. To see if the dynamic evidence of the town of Appleville, we're vote to authorize this select board to ease a portion of the so-called visitors in their the northeast harbor arena. To the Mount Desert Chamber, almost for a term of one year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four. Under such terms and conditions as the select board in its sole, the perfect means to be in the best. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Article twenty-six passes, Article twenty-seven. To see if you have access to the town of Mount Desert, we'll authorize this select board to negotiate and enter into an agreement with the neighborhood outside. For management and maintenance of the municipal swimming pool, return of one year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four. Under such terms and conditions as select board in its sole, the perfect means to be in the best. I checked it out. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Article twenty-seven passes, I'm not gonna read all of Article twenty-eight. It's easy to ignition. To see if the town of Mount Desert will vote to accept that Nene Brook Road and Timber Ridge Road serving at Nene Brook is state's homeowner association. Maybe in each lay as defined below and subject to the conditions set forth below. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? There was a name. Mid in my opinion. Article twenty-nine. So the town of Mount Desert be authorized to this is general, uh. General obligations on the notes of the town and the principal bond after receive three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Pay for a solar vote, pay for another solar project to go and as follows. One to purchase and revision investments that allows the solar vote pay system installed on the town garage. Located at three oh seven, sorry, two. The contract for professional and technical services to phase one development of potential solar vote, vote day. Located on the roof of the Son of Phil fire basin in the village of Son of Phil, on the land and basically the outer three. In the village of outer three and on the roof of the garage at the northeast harbor. In the village of northeast. I'm expecting that. Any discussion? Anyone want me to read the last sentence? All. Yes. I'm sorry you're reading that. All those in favor? Opposed? Article twenty-nine passes. Article thirty, shall the town of Mount Azus be authorized to this general obligation bond with notes to town or professional amount. Not to exceed one million, six hundred thousand dollar. to pay for professional, technical, and construction services for the construction of all improvements to the sound truck and curving in four locations with all side road locations building in boxes of twenty-six, twenty feet, and collectively due to S.S. project. And per the garage laws, the select board, it says in these texts, read any and all contracts and documents, and do any and all things necessary or convenient to issue the bond or give to the town, which may be callable and to accomplish such projects, said improvements shall include the following savings. Let me pick it up. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article twenty-nine, or Article thirty passes. Article thirty-one. Do I have the unanimous consensus to read the first couple of sentences? Anybody in the conference? Okay, so Article thirty-one, so the town of Montezar be authorized to issue General Obligation Bond on notes to the town and the principal bondholder not to exceed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay for professional, technical, and construction services for improvements to old fire arcades, the existing townhouse, gray cow, and gray hardware museum parking lots.
I'm second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article thirty-one passes. Article thirty-two. Uh, shall the town of Montezar be authorized to issue General Obligation Bond for notes of the town and the principal bondholder not to exceed two hundred and forty thousand dollars to pay for professional and technical services, including but not necessarily rendered to sanitary, swirly materials testing and design and creative operators, the select board or its designated to execute any and all contracts and obligations, any and all things necessary or convenient to issue the bond for the time noted with the town, which may be callable and to accomplish such projects as described ago. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Article thirty-three. Article thirty-three, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will authorize this select board to consent to the reallocation of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in town funds originally contributed by the town to the Mount of Your Community Development Corporation in twenty nineteen, in the party fund constructed by the park, for which the CDC has requested to be reallocated versus purchase of refrigerated equipment for the municipal skating. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article thirty-three passes. Article thirty-four. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to approve July one of each year at the state in which all taxes will still be duly payable, providing the all-only taxes on subsequent revenue each year shall be charged interest as an annual rate of eight point five percent per year. Tax form numbers are exempt within the terms and conditions of the sound tax agreement agreement. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article thirty-five. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to authorize this tax collector to enter into a standard tax level agreement with tax payer whereby one, the tax payer agrees to say specified monthly payments to the town based on the tax payer's estimated and actual access of the issues, including your property taxes, real estate or personal. Two, the town agrees to make matters on timely payments. Three, the town authorizes this tax collect to accept payment of taxes via the tax. Four, the agreement automatically terminates if each consecutive payments are listed in the tax payer, therefore becomes subject to the same due date and interest rate as other non-participating taxpayers. Five, only taxpayers who are paid equal on the property tax obligations slate with this fate. Six, interested taxpayers will apply annually for disbursement by the date shown on the application date and application form, to be determined by the tax collector. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to authorize this tax collector to assess prepayment of property taxes not yet committed, not to exceed the estimated amount to be committed in the subsequent year with no interest to be paid on the same. Any discussions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article thirty-eight, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to authorize expenditures... Wow, that's good that I didn't... Article thirty-seven. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to assess any interest rates to be paid by the town for bidding taxes that haven't paid at the rate of four point two five percent per year. Any discussion of Article thirty-seven? All in favor? All those opposed? Article thirty-seven passes. Now we'll be Article thirty-eight. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to authorize expenditures to pay any taxes avenues granted by the assessment board of assessments and viewers, the record, to gather any interest due thereafter from the town during the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four, in an aggregate amount not to exceed the property tax committed over there. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article thirty-nine. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to authorize this select board to dispose by public means of town-owned property other than real property with a value of ten thousand dollars or less, under such terms and conditions as is the use of S.I.T. Any discussion? All those in favor? Article thirty-nine passes. Article forty. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to authorize this select board to sell a public auction or buy advertised deals good into convey titles obtained under tax deeds and under deeds that's in vain to the inhabitants of the town, any land and or there in succeeding trailers in new paying of taxes except that the select board had the power to authorize to begin it. Municipal office will use special sale process required by thirty-six MRS nine four three dash C to qualify homestead property if they choose to sell it to anyone other than the owner. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article... Article forty passes. Article forty-one. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to authorize this select board to contract their services and amounts not to exceed appropriation for same and with such terms and conditions as is the use of S.I.T. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Forty-one passes. Article forty-two. You want me to explain this? Before I go to forty-three, before I go to forty-four?
So the municipal revenue section... Oh, okay, yeah. Thank you.
You can come either here, okay?
So the... Okay. So the, like I said, the municipal revenue section is stated at... For, uh, the total amount of the three articles, which is to state revenue sharing surplus and one of the four thousand, some of the undiscussed fund balance. All three of those together, including the point four, is one point nine million, six, six, four. That equals a total, which is two point five million. So... Right now, it says that the, that we have six hundred thousand dollars of revenue spent in the budget of eight four, because the total at the bottom is the total of all revenues.
Yes, but we're gonna make the amendment in Article forty-four. Yeah, so the way we have to put your Article forty-two and Article forty-three. In Article forty-four, they'll be submitting amendment, but I thought I'd tell you that at the top, so you wouldn't surprise. So now we'll do Article forty-two. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will authorize to issue two hundred thousand dollars of prior state revenue sharing funds, account one one zero dash one three two three, to be used to assess the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five taxes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article forty-two passes. Article forty-three. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to transfer four hundred thousand dollars to individuals' native fund balance, account one one zero dash three eight three zero zero, to reduce this twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five taxes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Article forty-three passes. Article forty-four. To see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to raise and or appropriate its revenue through excise taxes, service fees, business service, but in year twenty-five, 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 twenty twenty-four. So you're recommending a figure of two five oh nine, six, six, four. Would there be any amendments? One million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand... Six hundred... Six hundred... And you second it? So the amendment would be that the media recommends one million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. Nine... That's the difference between that they're taking out from the two above. So it's second, if there's any discussion of the amendment. Hearing done. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, we are back to the, now the original amendment is amended to read. One, one nine oh nine? One nine oh nine, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. We have to still discuss everything if you want to. Hearing no discussion, we've been voting. So this is favor? Opposed? Article forty-four passes. Article forty-five. Appropriation. See if the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to ratify the overdraft that occurred in public works for the year in the twenty thirty, June thirty, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of one oh four, 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 five dot seven nine. The overdraft was chartered for the undiscussed fund balance. Said overage was primarily attributable to the overages in the waste management department, five one five, then into ninety-six, eight, five, one, one oh four. Says departmental overage was primarily attributable to tipping fees of solid waste. Actual expenditures on tipping fees of four seven two, nine five two, or point nine three. Exceeded budgeted expectations of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars by eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents. Any discussion? All those in favor? And the opposition? Article forty-five passes. Article forty-six. See what some of the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to raise and appropriate for department two hundred through two eleven, general government governing bodies, select board, municipal management, town clerk, registrar, electing's planning board, bonds treasurer, tax collector, assessors, vote enforcement, unallocated funds, human resources, technology, and contracted municipal community oriented services for the twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. And there's a breakdown there where each one of those pieces goes. So the more committee is recommending, two million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And second. All, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? You're doing a great job of hanging in here, by the way. Article forty, uh, forty-six passes. Article forty-seven. To see what some of the inhabitants of Montezar will vote to raise and appropriate for department three hundred, general assistance support for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget.
Second.
All right, so it's a figure of five thousand dollars. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article forty-seven passes. Article forty-eight. To see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to raise and appropriate for department three five four, world least one hundred and six four, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So Article forty-eight passes as a figure of two five eight zero. Article forty-nine. See what some of the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to raise and appropriate for department four oh six, streetlights, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget.
I'm second that.
Any discussions? Yep, go ahead, man. I believe it's remaining in lights. We all know the lights down there. For the electricity, they run all the... Anybody have any answers, Ryan? Exactly.
Where all it's gonna be allocated. When you put in a solar installation, you can have up to, my understanding of it, but there's, you can have up to ten meters on it. One of the meters would be that particular solar panel installation. Nine other meters can be serviced by it. So any excess generation beyond like the building, the town, public, public works garage right now has an installation that generates an excess amount of electricity. There are other meters that get offset by that. So we could elect that streetlights be one of those that's offset if there's extra electrical generation. But that's not determined as to which meters would be in that pool potentially be offset, but it could be.
Further questions? Sure. A little solar panel? You mean like you see on Iris, and I know that.
We are working with consultants and looking at various solar installation projects, and I think that that's certainly an idea that I could bring forward and see if there's any viability to it.
There's also the... Any other discussions? All those in favor, Article forty-nine, twelve, five, sir? The oppositions? Article forty-nine passes. Article fifty. To see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Montezar will vote to raise and appropriate for department four oh one, four oh five, for its inquiry, public safety, police and communications dispatch for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. So the more committee is recommending a figure of one one zero, six hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Any discussion? Shellfish one.
Shellfish enforcement. So any of shellfish enforcement? Shellfish enforcement on...
Anyone questions in discussion? All those in favor, Article fifty? Opposed? Article fifty passes. Article fifty, come on. See what some of the inhabitants of the town of... See what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount desert will vote to raise and appropriate your department four oh three, four oh four, and four oh nine, public safety, fire department, highlights and emergency manager. For the twenty twenty four, twenty five, twenty five town budget.
My second.
So the Warren committee is recommending a figure of two million, seven hundred and seventy five thousand, one hundred and ninety two dollars. Any discussion? All those in favor? Supposed? Article fifty one passes. Article fifty two, to see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount desert will vote to raise and appropriate for department five oh one, five fifteen, five twenty, and five twenty five, public works, roads, waste management, buildings and grounds, park and cemetery, and five, three, five three zero, environmental sustainability for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five town budget.
Warren committee recommends. Two hundred and forty four thousand, seven hundred and ninety two dollars. And second is that amount.
All right, so the Warren committee is recommending three million, two hundred and twenty four thousand, seven hundred and ninety two dollars. Any discussions? Hearing done. All those in favor? Opposed? Article fifty two passes. Article fifty three. To see what's on the inhabitants of the town of Mount desert will vote to raise and appropriate your department five oh five and five oh six, sewers, wastewater treatment for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five town budget.
Second.
The Warren committee is recommending a figure of one million, two hundred and thirty seven, one hundred and sixty nine dollars. Any discussions? All those in favor? The oppositions? Article fifty three passes. Article fifty four. To see what's on the inhabitants of the town of Mount desert will vote to raise and appropriate for department six oh five, recreation, the public pool, utilities and maintenance for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five town budget. Article fifty four is open for discussion. Any discussion about the pool? All those in favor? Opposed? Article fifty four passes. Article fifty five. See what's on the inhabitants of the town of Mount desert will vote to raise and appropriate your department seven oh one, economic community development for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five town budget. Recommending a figure of ten thousand dollars, any discussion? All those in favor? Oppositions? Article fifty five passes. Article fifty six, to see what's on the inhabitants of the town of Mount desert will vote to raise and appropriate for department eight oh one, debt service for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five town budget. Somebody said that? Uh, the Warren committee is recommending two million, thirty thousand, six hundred and thirty two dollars. Second? Yep. What is the debt service? Would someone like to explain what the debt service is?
On our debt for all the bonds we continue to have, we meant for the debt system.
Any further question? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article fifty six passes. Article fifty seven. To see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount desert will vote to raise and appropriate for department eight by museum, village improvement societies, recreation, and uh, public social services agencies for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget. So the Warren committee, Warren committee is recommending a figure of uh, one hundred and eighty six, eight hundred and twenty five dollars, is there discussion? Jamie. Jamie, come on, can you go out there or can you address that still for people that are, you know, there's no.
You'll notice there was five thousand.
You gotta turn it in. It's a, it's a.
The select board, five thousand dollars. We were saying, the Warren. And that five thousand dollars theoretically is something, but it was specifically stripped out of the community development corporation. And uh, the reason was, as I still do, I love him, that he was sad that the community development corporation happens to have a lot of money. And it does, but the reason that money is there is almost all of his money that we have raised to the skating. In fact, the skating. So in fact, two weeks ago, we prepared the day for five hundred thousand dollars. K D make it go in when the tennis court was, so, so, and the rest of the money here, all of it is going to the. That's all the rest of the money that's there is going to go. If this money is raised by four people with no overhead, no legislation cost, go down. That it's going to the rainy or to the uh, part of the operations, so. I would hope that we keep that five thousand dollars because it's just taking away that is going to go to the town.
Out. So we're making an amendment? I'm like, you say, I think, I'd like to recommend the figure of one hundred and eighty six thousand, eight hundred and twenty five to give a money enough, so think here. Second? Wait, 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 Tom, wait a minute, this is just another, anybody want to second, Jamie? Okay. So the amendment is going to read that we change the figure from one eighty six, eight two five to one ninety one, eight two five. And. Is there any school? Can we do their amendment and then your amendment? Please, please. Um, any discussion? Katrina?
So, it's treated quarter and I'm on the war. And we entered, we entered the third party request.
Yeah, you guys speak to you.
So we weren't, and it's all the third party requests. And in the past, we could leave us to just in, renovating new requests for the new organization, well, we did issue. And it was the ones who were not through the corporation. And so we asked questions, and one of the questions was, how much money do you have in your profits? You're asking the town for five thousand dollars. What do you have? And they have over three hundred thousand dollars in their profits. So I thought, you know, three hundred thousand dollars, so you want me to give you five thousand? The math just didn't make sense to me. And their reasoning for this was, they made so much money fundraisers, that they had to hire someone to do their posts. Well, that's one of our first little problem when it comes to fundraising. And so the highest that we reduce, the Warren committee recommended by the five thousand. So that's what was my suggestion.
Thank you. And then it was very impressive. Discussion? All right, this is, we're just voting on this amendment to the article. So all those in favor are amending article fifty seven to read, um, to now read one hundred and ninety one thousand, eight hundred and twenty five dollars, so you say yes. All those opposed? In my opinion. In my opinion, you know, this was a lot of anybody disagrees, we can. Yes, he's good. I wish, get, get ready. Um, is anybody seriously disagreeing about maybe using the nose and the hands? Then I would say that I would. All right, now we're back to the original motion, which is um, a rec, a recommendation way sixty twenty five. Is there any other, further discussion or other amendments to something? But, why not?
David Blanchard with the Sunville Village Improvement Society along with Tom Perner. Uh, we'd like to request six thousand dollars additional funds to support the Sunville B I S society. My understanding is that Secretary customarily notified, I mean, funding your request is seen to be submitted to the town. We did not receive such requests this year, and he required about it. He was, uh, past his deadline for assistance. To amend. The sorry, but the amount is a thousand dollars.
Which was rejected, it was in the amount of the one ninety two we can start. You're second, you're down. Okay. Well, get the second, get this on, and when we have discussion, let's start this over. All right. Any discussion? Tom, this is our first, this is we need cases. You gotta, I don't know, you can like.
Artists, we're gonna start finding. Elm trees in Sunville. Bring the beauty of that town back. And that's where most of the money is gonna go. It won't cut all of it. We do depend on uh, donations. Thank you very much.
Any other discussions? Hearing done. Uh, Rick, go ahead.
I don't think they can bring up the funding issue unless it's been posted in the law.
They can change the um, number at the end, it doesn't necessarily delegate it to them. But what's written in the manual? You can't, you can, you can change the, if it's. If it's not written in the recommendation, in the text. And it's only written where the, in the recommendations are, you can change the figure. But it can't, as it can't be designated anywhere in particular, just changing the figure. You could jump, I don't care if we disagree, go ahead.
Is it designated to go to the Sunville B I S?
No. It changes the figure that goes into the thing, but it does not present meaning to go to the B I S. Yeah. Sure. Uh, the question is whether this, if they change this figure, will it help the B I S or not, if someone's in the town speak to it.
Understanding this is it would then go to the board of selectmen to determine where that money would go. So the board of selectmen then to decide whether that should go to the Sunville B I S, or whether they should shake it and split it up easily among the other organizations becomes a policy matter of that.
Got it? Any further questions? Hearing done. Vote, this is, which is to change the figure of the one eighty six, eight twenty five to one ninety two, eight two five. All those in favor? All those opposed? Sounds. Uh, in my opinion, the eyes happen, does anyone disagree? Okay. Then that amendment does not pass, now we go back to voting on the original. Sorry, what? Oh, it passed, excuse me, it did that. I'm getting confused myself, as I said, I'm not. So it passes, and now the article reads one ninety two, eight two five. This is, I'm not specifically. All those in favor of article fifty seven as amended? Please say aye. Opposed? Article fifty seven passes. Sorry, sorry. Article fifty eight, to see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount desert will vote to raise and appropriate your department nine nine and capital improvement trend, plan transfers for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five town budget.
Twenty seven dollars.
So the Warren committee is recommending one, says one hundred and five hundred and twenty seven dollars. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? Opposed? Article fifty eight passes. Article fifty nine. This is confusing.
In the legislature, this law is revealed, so there's no need for us to go.
There you go. Same, waiting me. Uh, well, then I would maintain a move to pass over this article. Do I need it? Do I even need it? I think I need it, I think you should share. I would take a, to pass over this article? Me neither. Who first raised it? Okay, so we'd like to pass over that? Thank you, and second? Any discussions? All those in favor? Article sixty. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount desert will vote to ratify the select board's approval of the marine proprietary fund of budget. And the select board recommends ratification. Well, you need a move to recommend. So. I don't think somebody should second. Now we can open discussion about why the Warren committee recommended it. Phil, would you like to? Phil? You have to remember that half of this is.
Speaking of Warren committee, you make your record of basis as a marine edge model as part of, as an enterprise thought, they generate their own income, and hence we don't vote on it. But the worst is like, there's always shows, because this is transparent article, I say every year at town meetings, the voters understand where the money is going from and how it's been generated. Have understood it?
Any other question? All those in favor of article sixty, sixty eight passes? And the oppositions? Article sixty passes. We're in the school of appropriation. Article sixty one. To see what's on the pool board will be authorized to expend for regular construction for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty four, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty five. So the, so the Warren committee is recommending a figure of two million, two hundred and seventy seven thousand, four hundred and forty five dollars. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of article sixty one of the figure of two million, two seven seven, four, four, five? Opposed? Article sixty one passes. Article sixty two. To see what's on the pool board will be authorized to expend for special education for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty four, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty five. So the Warren committee is recommending a figure of seven hundred and eighty one thousand, three hundred and sixty six dollars. Any discussion? Yep. Yeah, you got the show. Show. Good, loud enough, is this. Good, loud enough, business. So is there a second from repertory money aside for the future, or is this just this year in your budget? Yes, sir. Anyone who would want to speak can do it. Referring focus to this way, anyway.
Uh we do have a special education reserve balance of a hundred and twenty three thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. And there's also the. What? And then putting twenty thousand in. There's also the district, um. AOS special education reserve that we can access to YouTube if we expand this on the reserve.
And who are you?
Oh, I'm Heather Doran.
Thank you. You're standing. Set up, Mia? Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor of Article sixty two of the figure of seven million one three six six? Opposed? Article sixty two passes. Article sixty three, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to expend for career and technical education for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty twenty four and ending June thirty twenty twenty five. So they're recommending a figure of zero, and is there any discussion? Really? What would you like to say?
So fascinated, and people are not getting an opportunity to learn that.
You get this one. There. Yeah.
Oh, I really wanted to talk. Yeah, he's got a whole half hour speech he gave in the morning.
Yes, Article sixty relates to the elementary system. Uh any further special questions about the elementary school? All those in favor? Those opposed? Just so we get to it, when we get to it later, and it says the appropriated items for K's twelve. Same thing, just appropriate for the elementary school, but the state requires K twelve. All right. Article sixty four, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to expend for other instruction for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty twenty four and ending June thirty twenty twenty five. So the warrant committee is recommending one oh nine seven eight five. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article sixty four passes. Article sixty five, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to expend for student and staff support for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty twenty four and ending June thirty twenty twenty five. The warrant committee is recommending a figure of six fifty nine oh six. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Article sixty five passes. Article sixty six, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to expend for system administration for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty twenty four and ending June thirty twenty twenty five. The warrant committee is recommending one hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and forty nine dollars. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article sixty six passes. Article sixty seven, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to spend for school administration for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty twenty four and ending June thirty twenty twenty five. They're recommending a figure of three twenty nine two two three. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article sixty seven passes. Article sixty eight, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to spend for transportation buses for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty twenty four and ending June thirty twenty twenty five. They're recommending two hundred and eighty nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Article sixty eight passes. Article sixty nine, see what some of the school board will be authorized to spend for system facilities maintenance for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty twenty four and ending June thirty twenty twenty five. The warrant committee is recommending a figure of seven hundred and sixty two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Article sixty nine passes. Article sixty, uh article seventy, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to spend for debt service and other commitments for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty twenty four and ending June thirty twenty twenty five. The warrant committee is recommending zero dollars. Any questions? Any other questions? All those in favor? Article seventy passes. Article seventy one, to see what some of the school board will be authorized to expend for all other expenses for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty twenty four and ending June thirty twenty twenty five. The warrant committee is recommending a figure of eighty thousand dollars. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposition? Article seventy one passes, and there's a note that Article sixty one through seventy one authorizes a total budget of five million four hundred and one thousand three hundred and sixty four dollars. Article seventy two through seventy four now raise the money that we just authorized to be expended. Which is how it works. And this one requires a hand count, two hand counts and everything. Article seventy two, to see what some of the voters of the Mount of their to appropriate gave the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the essential program from services funding act. They recommend two million two hundred and seventy three thousand two hundred and ninety three dollars. And to see what some of the voters of the town of Mount of their will raise this down contributions to the total costs of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the essential program from services funding act. In accordance with the Mayiva statute, statute, Mayda, that since one five six eight eight, it agreed to eleven, it'll be twenty four and eighteen thirty twenty twenty five.
They recommend one million nine hundred fifty nine thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars. And seconded that a lot.
So the warrant committee is recommending a figure of one million nine hundred and fifty nine thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. Any discussion? All those in favor, please use your microphone. You're done, right? You can put your card down. But then they got you. Any days? As you chose, a chance to stand up from the crowd. All right. The article passes with ninety guesses and no aces. All right. Article twenty seventy two passes. Article seventy three, to see what some the voters of the town of Mount were raised and appropriated for the annual payments on debt service previously approved by the legislative body for non-state funded school construction projects, non-stated funded portions of school construction projects and minor capital projects in addition to the funds that are created as the success of local territory found of Mount Desert's contributions to the total costs of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve for the period July one twenty twenty four and ending June thirty twenty twenty five.
I seconded that figure of zero.
So the warrant committee is recommending a figure of. Any discussion? All those in favor? Yeah, we have another hand count for it. Article seventy three passes with a ninety, yes, no may. They passed. Uh now we get to write it out. It's like gymnastics. Uh Article seventy four, to see what some of the voters of the town of Mount of their are raising for creating additional local funds for school purposes. The recommendation is three million seventy nine thousand two hundred and fifty nine for the period July one one twenty four to June thirty twenty twenty five which exceed state essential programs and services allocation model by their recommendation is state recommendation is three million seventy nine thousand two hundred and fifty nine as required to fund the budget recommended by the school board. The school board recommends three million seventy nine thousand two hundred and fifty nine dollars for additional local funds. Gives the following reasons for exceeding state's essential program and services funding model by three million seventy nine thousand two hundred and fifty nine dollars. The state funding model underestimates these actual costs to still be funded twenty twenty year budget. So the warrant committee is recommending a figure of three million seventy nine dollars to fifty nine. Any discussion? Go ahead. You can talk about it. Well, George. It's next, next time I have a replacement for everybody. We'll expect you next year. And here are good questions. All those in favor? Oh, this is a written ballot. If you're in favor or opposed, if you are, come and vote. Oh, this is a written ballot. If you're in favor or opposed, if you are, come and vote.
Good, are you? Good. Um, the Thursday. Yeah, so. Everybody.
Uh, is anybody left who wants to vote? For the first time, I'm only. Let's call, does everybody vote or listen to vote? Martha? We're not on your watch. Just so you know, Phil's getting word that some of you are speaking on, so. And we need fifty people to be able to vote, or we'll make you all come back tomorrow night. Bye, sis. Enjoy your, enjoy your night. Let's go to work. Good job, family. We have you. Well, anybody that says non-voter agrees here. Article seventy-four, the written ballot about the sum of raising three million, seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Passed with seventy-four votes and three noes. We can use seventy-five. Uh, Article seventy-five is another hand vote. And summarizes just the road school budget, does not authorize any additional spending. To see what sum the voters of the town of Mount of the River will authorize the school board to expend for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five for town's contributions to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Central Programs and Services Funding Act. Non-state funded schools, construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the Mayide by statutes that apply that day, section one, six nine, zero, unexpected balance to it and receipt state subsidy and other receipts for the school. The Warren Committee is recommending five. The Warren Committee recommends five million, four hundred and one thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars. Is there any discussion? Article seventy-five passes. Article seventy, this. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. It'll pass after you roll the lead, you yellow card. Yeah, but I, I credit this as passing. Are there any noes? As soon as the speaker, Article seventy-five. You're supposed to say yes. I hear you know, it's no noes. Article seventy-five had seventy-six yeses and zero noes. So it passed. Article seventy-six. In addition to the amount of Article sixty-one through seventy-five, will the school board be authorized to expend unless other sums may be received from state, federal grants, or programs or other sources during the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five for school purposes provided that such grants, programs, or other sources do not require the expenditure of other funds as necessary. Any discussion? Hearing none. Articles, any? Everybody say yes. Any days? Articles, any discussions? I believe that's the end of the articles that I would probably entertain. Second, and it's not debatable. Hey, everybody. If anybody's interested and really needs something fascinating, there is a separate meeting. Start at any.